Karen, we are live on YouTube. You may begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Sean. Well, good evening again Restonians and welcome to this special meeting of the Board of Directors, November 10th, 2021. Again, it's a virtual meeting. I will say that the purpose of this meeting, I called this meeting for the purpose of sort of wanting to lessen the burden next week at our regular board meeting when we are tasked with approving the 2022-2023 budget. So I thought that, you know, we could have, since we were meeting already tonight for the public hearing, that we could tack on another meeting to deal with some things and have a peek at draft three before next week. So that's the reason for this meeting. I see, I believe I have quorum. Mr. Patrion, Mr. Collins, Ms. Justchuk, I'm here. Do you have Mr. Mooney's here? Okay, all right. So this meeting is officially called to order and I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the special meeting agenda for tonight.
So I'm vote.
I think Bob's hand went up, so.
That's all right, second.
I'll take you as a second. Okay, Tim and Bob, Bob and Tim. Okay. All right, now, are there any member comments?
We need to vote on it, right?
I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Thank you. Is this a problem with having back-to-back meetings? I think I've already done that.
You have.
I have, I have. Okay, all right. So now on to member comments and I believe Ms. Bitzer has her hand up.
Yes, I do. Am I unmuted?
You are.
Great, sorry. I'm tacking on this comment because frankly, after listening to the public budget hearing discussions and some of the chat room comments, it occurred to me that I had not seen, jump out at me when I reviewed the budget documents, any specific line item referencing support for data gathering as part of the PRAK recommendation that as part of our work items focus on getting a better handle of what does the community want and use in our recreation facilities and our amenities, whether it be, you know, non-lakefront boat owners' ability to utilize our lakes or pickleball or tennis, I'll even throw rugby and soccer and whatever. But we had, as a committee, had recommended that we get some additional funding to support that data gathering, data analysis, as well did recreational facilities working group that had recently morphed from that into the new PRAK. So if it's not in your budget, or if it is in there somewhere and I just don't know where it is, I believe we had requested, recommended that you might need about $100,000 up to $60,000 to $100,000 to support that activity. And as we are, so much of our budget does go into supporting our amenities and facilities and we've got an aging infrastructure, I think it would be well worth to gather some additional data. So that was my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Oh, God. Is that in the draft anywhere, Larry?
Karen, what I'd like to do is ask Laura to address that. I think she's on the call.
Is she on? Okay.
We do not have that, but I believe we have some funding to at least initiate part of that. So Laura, you want to address that?
I'm getting to the budget here to see where that is. It's a small amount between $5,000 to $7,000 in $4,600 to support PRAK. It is not the $60,000 to $100,000 discussed at the previous meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other member comments?
I forgot to say that I lived at 2020 Papernham Court, Ruston, Virginia. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay. If there is no other member comments, we have an executive session scheduled next, so I would like to make a motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay. We will convene into executive session and be back.
Okay, are we all back? It still says we're in executive session. There we go. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this from memory. Because I didn't do my printout, so Tony, help me up. I move to certify, uh, to the best of each board member's knowledge. Yes, John? Oh, that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a personnel nature were discussed.
Awesome.
Listen, you would think I would know it by heart, but, uh, was that a second, Bob?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nay. Okay, we are, we are back in open session. So the next item on the agenda is the 2022-23 operating and capital budgets and assessment rate. And I'm going to turn these proceedings over to Mr. Butler to start things off.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So you all have in your packet a very familiar presentation with the changes that came forward from, yeah, our board meeting. And I'm happy to go through it. I don't know if there's value in that. I leave that up to your all's collective discretion. You know, I certainly can do that. I think more importantly, though, what I'd like to do is, you know, here, and we've got staff on, other staff on the call to answer questions that you may have about the draft three that was in the, in the packet. One of the reasons, as Karen noted, for having this meeting tonight was so that if there are questions, it can be answered in advance of, either the fiscal committee meeting or the November 18th board meeting at which, I think you all hope and be in the community, both the budget will be approved and the assessment set and so forth, that we can answer those and have some discussion about them so that the November 18th meeting isn't an exercise in really late night business. So I guess I would ask the question, if you, I can go through the slides, but if you've seen them, most of the changes were highlighted in red, so they're easy to follow. And one of the important things are the funding strategies. And, you know, I think the fiscal committee meeting on Monday is going to be very informative for that, particularly with respect to the capital and the utilization of existing resources and fund balances to help offset some of the increase in the assessment, which I think we've, you know, we have forecasted that that assessment can be, in my opinion, quite reasonable. So I guess I'll lead that off and see if there's any initial questions or if you want me to go through the slide deck.
John, you're muted. And Karen, John has his hand up.
Oh, I'm, do you say I'm not muted? Somebody muted. John, John, go ahead.
I just am responding to Larry's question as an individual board member. I found your presentation, your PowerPoint presentation, very clear. You don't need to lead me through it.
Thank you, John.
Mike has his hand up, Karen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I gotta look at my screen and not my tablet. Go ahead, Mike.
Got it. Thanks. Larry, we discussed a few months back the potential for adding some ADA compliance items in this budget. Were you able to find some low hanging fruit that you're able to incorporate?
Well, we've got two that were actually commenced this year that have turned out to be much trickier than we originally thought. And that is ADA doors for Nature House and Lake House. A bit more complicated, and Chris can get into the details if you want those. The other big one that we've got in there that we're hoping to start, again, Chris can give the more specific update, is for the temporary road picnic pavilion, that, that whole facility. So we have those essentially underway. So I don't know if that addresses your question fully.
Yeah, not quite. I mean, and I'm really late to the game in asking this, but I think what I had asked for was a survey that told us, you know, what else is out there that we haven't gotten to yet that's maybe, like I said, low hanging fruit that we can squeeze into this budget for 2023? And were there things that you were able
Okay, are we all back? It still says we're in executive session. Oh, there we go. Okay, I'm gonna. I'm gonna do this from memory. Um, because I didn't do my printout, so Tony, help me up. Uh, I moved to certify, uh, to the best of each board member's knowledge. Yes, John, oh. That only those matters appropriate for executive session of a personnel nature were discussed.
Awesome.
Listen. You would think I would know it by heart, but, uh, was that a second, Bob?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nay. Okay. We are. We are back in open session. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is the 2022-23 operating and capital budgets and assessment rate. Uh, and I'm going to turn these proceedings over to Mr. Butler to start things off.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So you all have in your packet a very familiar presentation with the changes that came forward from, yeah, the board meeting. And I'm happy to go through it. I don't know if there's value in that. I leave that up to your all's collective discretion. You know, I certainly can do that. I think more importantly, though, what I'd like to do is, you know, here and we've got staff on, other staff on the call to answer questions that you may have about the draft three that was in the, in the packet. Uh, one of the reasons, as Karen noted, for having this meeting tonight was so that if there are questions, it can be answered in advance of either fiscal committee meeting or the November 18th board meeting at which, I think you all hope and be in the community, the budget will be approved and the assessment set and so forth, that we can answer those and have some discussion about them so that the November 18th meeting isn't an exercise in, uh, really late night business. Um, so I guess I would ask the question if you, I can go through the slides. But if you've seen them, most of the changes were highlighted in red, so they're easy to follow. Um, and one of the important things are the funding strategies. And, you know, I think the fiscal committee meeting on Monday is going to be very informative for that, particularly with respect to the capital and the utilization of existing resources and fund balances to help offset some of the increase in the assessment, which I think we've, you know, we have forecasted that that assessment can be, in my opinion, quite reasonable. Um, so I guess I'll lead that off and see if there's any initial questions or if you want me to go through the slide deck.
John, you're muted. And Karen, John has his hand up.
Oh, I'm.
Thank you.
I'm not muted. Somebody, John, John, go ahead.
I just am responding to Larry's question as an individual board member. Uh, I found your presentation, your PowerPoint presentation very clear. You don't need to lead me through it.
Thank you, John.
Mike has a say in it, Karen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I gotta look at my screen and not my tablet. Go ahead, Mike.
Got it. Thanks. Um, Larry, we discussed a few months back, the potential for adding some ADA compliance items in this budget. Um, were you able to find some low hanging fruit that you're able to incorporate?
Well, we've got two that were actually commenced this year that have turned out to be much trickier than we originally thought. And that is ADA doors for Nature House and Lake House. More complicated and Chris can get into the details if you want those. Um, the other big one that we've got in there that we're hoping to start, we're, again, Chris can give the more specific update is for the temporary road picnic pavilion, that, that whole facility. So we have those essentially underway. So I don't know if that addresses your question fully.
Yeah, not quite. I mean, and I'm really late to the game in asking this, but I think what I had asked for was a survey that told us, you know, what else is out there that we haven't gotten to yet? That's maybe, like I said, low hanging fruit that we can squeeze into this budget for 2023. And were there things that you were able to do that with? And again, I apologize for not following up and made sure we had that.
The, aren't that many that are low hanging fruit.
Okay.
We are looking at a accessible top lot up in Lake Newport. And then, again, maybe I should have Chris just address these. Um, that's, so that's another one that's on, on the radar right now. But, but a lot of the facilities, it's not so much, it's not only the facility itself, it's the access to the facility.
Hmm.
You know, from, from, you know, from the parking lot standpoint, uh, you know, all the way through and to whatever the accessible features may be.
Right, right. Yeah, it doesn't make, doesn't make sense to do a doorknob when you, uh, can't get to it in the first place.
Right, yeah. Chris, do you wanna, you wanna jump in?
Sure. Um, so as, as Larry mentioned, uh, the, the ADA doors are a little bit more complicated because we had a couple of different issues regarding trying to retrofit some of these facilities. Um, you know, you've got situations like it, uh, Nature House where you're dealing with these solid, very heavy ornate wooden doors and trying to retrofit them with actuators and ensuring that they're still operable easily by staff and secureable as well during off hours. So that kind of complicates the lake house. We discovered an unusual problem where the exterior wall, which is typically a load bearing structure, in this case is not. And so when you try to put a actuating door on such a wall, you get a lot of movement. And so we need to find a better way of anchoring it to the foundation to keep the wall from actually shifting and actually causing, you know, cracks and whatnot in it, which are already starting to be, you know, shown from just a normal door. Um, and then over a temporary road for the pavilion, we've actually finalized the design on that. We've submitted the DRB application will be reviewed on the December 14th panel, I believe. And then, so once that's clear, we can start moving forward on actually getting that underway. Um, and for the other projects that we're looking at towards, you know, 2022, um, as Larry said, you know, it's typically not a lot of low hanging fruit. However, we do have projects such as Lake Throw, um, that will be integrating, you know, all the accessibility requirements to modern code. So that's a big one, obviously. Um, Lake Newport is also one that we actually had funded for its replacement. I'm talking about the top lot at Lake Newport was funded for this year. We looked at the, um, the kind of the scope there, talking with staff, and we kind of just discovered or thought, this is a great opportunity to install a fully ADA compliant play structure. And perhaps we should look at making this kind of a destination level of installation. Um, because we don't really have any other fully compliant ADA playgrounds, except there's one over at Pony Barn. But most other ones are really not fully accessible. Um, so this is an opportunity, however, putting one of those installations is very, very expensive. You know, you're talking upwards of, you know, in the six figures category. So the funding for that is not really adequate to do an installation of that type. And so there will be a suggestion, um, first need to be brought through the Parks Recreation Commission, you know, PrAC Committee to kind of evaluate the need and then, um, kind of go from there in terms of what we want to do next. So that's one of the projects, uh, that's kind of sitting on the back burner for the moment until we can kind of decide which direction we want to go with that. Um, but we are, we regularly, as we have projects come up, we evaluate them for what can we do to make them compliant?
Yeah.
In some circumstances, we, we have to by code, um, if there's a building permit filed. Uh, but, uh, but yeah, there's, there wasn't anything that was low hanging because as you said, or as Larry said, you know, it's one thing to, to do something in the facility, make it compliant. But at the end of the day, if you can't get to it in the first place.
Yeah.
Accessible path, it really doesn't make a lot of sense. But we do whenever possible, try our best to make it, uh, compliant as much as we can.
Got it. So I, and I know you do, I really do. So that, and I think you've said this already, but it, there's nothing that's costed, ready to go that you left out of this budget for budget reasons. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Do we need to address what Julie brought up tonight as far as PrAC earlier on asking for a chunk of money for park, for recreational facility surveys? Um, I feel that, I feel obligated to follow up on that. Yes, Bob?
I, I think from a fiscal standpoint, it hasn't, um, I don't know what the scope of this and of this, uh, type of consulting or engagement would be. Hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. We have, um, although some of it's dated, I don't think that Reston is particularly unique uh, within the structure of Fairfax County, uh, that we couldn't, we couldn't, uh, follow on with studies that have been done both by the county and by other organizations. Um, I know, um, the vice chairman, uh, the vice chair of PrAC, as mentioned, you know, the, the PROS study that was done, as Larry mentioned, you know, 16 years ago.
Yeah.
Which was, which, uh, in structure is very similar to the ones that I've seen done for RCC and, um, the JMU or GMU, excuse me, uh, study that was done. The, the questionnaire itself and the PROS study could be adapted to, to be used again. I think the, the real value would be, uh, without the new member of PrAC who is, who is the, the real um, expert in, in evaluating these studies, might might provide a little bit of input, but I, I'm hesitant to spend another hundred thousand dollars. Until we really have, really focus on what we want and how to get it done.
I, I completely agree. I just felt, I felt that, you know, because it was brought up tonight, I needed to address it.
I think, I think we, we need to do a lot more surveys. We need to interact with our members um, on a regular basis. One of the problems with surveys is that you tend to over survey rather than under survey. And it can be annoying. Um, and I know that the common, common complaint of, of surveys that have been done locally is the same set of people, uh, the curmudgeons from the community are the ones who always answer.
Well, that's, that's always the problem is to get a wider swath of people responding.
But I, uh, the other thing that I think is that if we, if we look at this in a different way and maybe through different mechanisms, different platforms, uh, different means, we can ex, expand this to include people that are using their phones more than email or other thing, uh, other, other venues. And I won't, won't drag this out.
Yeah, no, I don't want to get into.
A lot of money.
Surveys, I just.
Kind of ill defined at this point.
I just wanted to address that because she brought it up tonight. So thank you. Um, okay. Was, was there anything else that, that you needed to throw out to us tonight, Larry, that, um, will help next week?
Well, I guess, you know, to some degree, if there's, you know, and I know this, this is not the forum because it wasn't, uh, noticed as such for, you know, votes or anything, but, you know, general consensus on, you know, at least a couple of the, the funding strategies, some of which we'll discuss at fiscal on Monday.
Right.
Particularly with respect to the triple RF. But we have factored in there the use of 2020 and 2021 operating surplus, which was recommended by the fiscal committee. So, um, you know, let, let me restate this. In the absence of any further direction at this time, what we're going to put together for the packet that goes out Friday to the board for the meeting next week. If I don't have, if I don't get direction on any other changes of anything that's currently in draft three that you have in front of you and the explanations and so forth, then what will go out and, you know, for the assessment and everything else for the board's consideration next week will be what you have in front of you tonight. Now, I'm saying it's a bad thing. I'm just saying that, you know, in the absence of further information or direction, that, that's what you're going to get. I mean, we have two days to, to get this, you know, put together and all the background, the fee schedule, all those kinds of things. And, uh, and make sure we get it laid out cleanly. So it's, you know, understandable and there'll be an updated presentation. You know, if it doesn't change, it'll have a new title anyways. So it'll be fresh in that respect. But, uh, so I guess it's really other, other questions, you know, kind of fundamental questions about what you've got in, in what you have in front of you tonight that you need clarification on before we commit it to a board packet that goes out on Friday.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, Bob?
Um, I did not do it, but, uh, my esteemed colleague Dave Kerr was good enough this afternoon to integrate all the changes in the package into a single page. And I will, I'm going to share it with everybody because I, it puts everything, it's at, uh, at a high level. But I think directionally and without getting into the hundreds and tens of dollars that we tend to focus on in the budget, it really shows, um, what has the, at, at least the last two versions of the budget and the implications, uh, as well as the assumptions that, that Dave, uh, so kindly did on his own this, uh, this afternoon. And I've spent a bit of time reviewing it and haven't found any errors in it, any major errors in it. So I'd like to share it with you all. Um, so you have it when you look at the totality of the budget. So I'm gonna share my screen with you real quick. Hopefully you're.
Yep, it's not, it's up there.
It's up there?
Yep.
Okay. So that there we go. Finally. Much more important than the is the second page. And, um, I think it, it speaks for itself. Dave has included his assumption and observations. And I think it would be very useful, uh, for all the board members to, uh, begin to look, to look at this in the context of, um, what we're going to approve and how the numbers all flow uh, in, in Dave's spreadsheet. So I will send that to everyone at the close of this, at the close of this session.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, that'll be helpful, Bob. And I think some of that we can address on Monday night with, with fiscal.
Right. And as I, as I said, Dave took, uh, all the changes that were, were proposed in draft three. Uh, any changes that he did make, any are included in the assumptions and the observations. So, um, we'll just leave it at that for, for the moment. So I'll stop sharing.
Thank you.
Because it makes it a little, it makes, it makes it a lot easier to see how this all fits together than, um, as we look through individual items, which I end up spending a lot of time, you know, combing through and trying to understand how they come together. So thank you for, um, for putting up with my brief presentation.
No, thank you. Thank you. That's good. Yes, Director Mooney?
Um, Madam President, uh, if, if I can have the help of, um, our general counsel on exactly how to frame this, I would like to make a motion uh, to reconsider the Barton Hill Tennis Project deferral that we approved last, last meeting. And my understanding of the careful way that Jennifer framed it, that what we approved was simply putting that switch into the third draft of the, of the 2022 budget. And not, it was not a vote to confirm that switch for the final version of that budget. Is that correct, Jennifer?
I, I framed all of my motions, not as final approvals by the board, but going into drafts.
Okay. So, Tony, would my motion be to reconsider or what, what would it be?
To rescind.
I beg your pardon?
To rescind.
Okay. So I vote that oh, even though, even though the goal was simply to put it into the third draft, it's still a rescission? Since we're now talking about draft four?
But, well, the, it will be draft three that we'll be voting on next week.
Draft three, John, that you vote on. It's not on draft four.
Pardon?
This will be draft three, as I understand it, that comes to the board next week.
Yes, that's, that's what I was saying. So.
Jennifer, to put it into, to put that into draft three. So you would need to rescind that if you don't want it in draft three in that way.
Okay. Then, then I move that we rescind our decision to switch the Barton tennis, Barton Hill Tennis Project from fiscal 2022 to 2023.
I'll second.
With note on rescissions, because this was made without prior notice, you will require a two thirds, uh, majority to carry this motion.
Okay. So.
Question, question, uh, uh, because John was one of the I voters on the motion that passed in October, he is able to make a motion to reconsider rather than rescind. With, so why? Would reconsider imply an amendment to that as opposed to just a rescinding it outright? Is that, is that why you suggested that he move to rescind rather than reconsider?
I believe reconsider, again, I, I don't, I'm gonna have to look at it, but I believe reconsider has to be done on the day of the motion. It cannot be done subsequent. Rescind may be done subsequent. But if you'll give me a moment, I'll.
You're, you know, I think you're right, Tony, because I was, I was researching this. I, I believe. Well, I'm not sure. I know you can't rescind on this at the same meeting, but I think you, you can reconsider at a later meeting. I'm not, uh, that, that I don't know.
Let, let Tony figure it out.
Yes, Bob?
Are, are we discussing this, this motion now?
Um, yeah.
There was a motion and a second. Are we gonna?
No, we, we can discuss it. I just wanted to clarify that.
Was, was there a motion? Was there a motion and a second? John, did you get the full motion?
Yes, there was. John moved and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm an agnostic as far as tennis and pickleball go. My objection, uh, for the rescission will, will be that we don't have enough data. There are, there were 13 very eloquent, um, people who were for tennis. There were, um, we have received over the last couple of days, neighborhood, the whole, whole neighborhoods objections to the, to, uh, the project. And I think we should, I think we should, uh, we should have more data available to us before we decide to go out and spend, if I remember correctly. Uh, if we do both lighting and the courts, it's going to be three quarters of a million dollars or more. Uh, and I'm just not ready to support that at, at this moment. We, we did a very good job. I know it was a demanding job, but we did a, a very good job of getting information on Shadowwood Pool. Uh, it can be done again. Um, Um, and I think it should be done before we, you know, spend the money. Uh, we should have a lighting s- uh some kind of lighting demonstration, particularly for the neighbors um that live in Bart- on Barton Hill. But that, that's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Yes, John. And then Erin.
Um, let me say why I made the motion. I I wrote this motion out uh before the meeting, before hearing the people testify today. Um, first of all, one of the most um unacceptable parts to the neighborhood has been withdrawn when Larry withdrew the proposal for a partial cover over the tennis courts. Um, there were many remaining concerns raised, need for about the need for court renovations themselves. I'll talk about that, about the impact of the proposed lighting and the impact of the addition of pickleball. Um, and I've I read every one of the member comments, pros and cons, and I'm aware that I'm aware of having been forwarded to the board. Um. I, after I voted on uh for switching Barton Hill to two thousand twenty-three on October twenty-eighth, I I had misgivings. And so I asked for a meeting with Larry and Chris Shoemaker onsite. Karen came along, Jennifer came along, all board members were invited. And and based uh in large part what I learned there, I I now believe that uh we should move forward with Barton Hill with lights and pickleball. Um, I um, many, many of the, many of the crack filler that has been put in just months ago has itself begun to crack. You can see fissures in it after only a few months, not big fissures, but you can see where they are cracking. And it is Chris Shoemaker's concern that if we take uh, if we take um, if if we do the switch um that uh we could have two tennis courts out of commission. Uh, not only of the clay court, but now this one too, if the cracking becomes more serious, as it will probably happen with the freeze thaw cycles that it will go through during winter and early spring. Uh, I believe that many, I I believe that many of the bad effects feared by Barton Hill neighbors can be managed with the normal, during the normal developmental process. Um, I I did a um, I did a Google Earth survey. The nearest, the nearest uh home to the tennis courts is two hundred and eighty feet away. And there is a a thick canopy of trees between between the tennis courts and the nearest neighbors and 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 even more um even more um trees between uh the tennis courts and more distant neighbors. I I have, I have very, uh the the issues are so old and so well-known that I do not believe a community process is likely to resolve them. I believe rather that the board is in the best position to accept the tough job of balancing the pros and cons. Thank you.
Um, thank you, John. Well, well said. I agree with everything you said and just to to uh add one little point about the having both Glade and Barton Hill out of commission in the same year. Um, Barton Hill is already unplayable. It it's hazardous to play on on those courts the way they are now. Um, and and I totally agree about if we did a wider community outreach, the proportion of pros to cons would would not change significantly at all. Um, I did a rough tally of all the emails that we've gotten in the past month that I've responded to and um um even factoring in the petition that we saw today, the pros still outweigh outweigh the cons, so. Um, and I and it, yeah, I was surprised to uh in the earlier meeting that it was all people in favor that that showed up to make member comments. I guess the 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 cons feel that their their emails did the trick. I don't know. Um, so yes, somebody else had their hand up, I think, wanted to weigh in on this. Yes, Tom.
Um, and then. First of all, apologize for for missing the earlier meeting. Uh, I did, I didn't hear, but I did see the emails prior to that. And being on Prac, I would say that I've I've heard repeatedly what we've talked about Barton Hill, going back with Larry discussing ten years ago when they were trying to do a project there and it was shot down. It doesn't seem like much has changed um in terms of the the close neighbors who are concerned about that. Um, I don't play tennis. I'll I'll say that upfront, but I do walk by there repeatedly. And it's crowded all the time. So there's people playing tennis all the time. Um, we're going to, if we if we shut this one down this year and go to Glade and as far as payments, um, again, we're gonna have less courts available for our membership. And I don't think that's a good move that we should do.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, Mike.
Uh, question for Larry and Chris. Was there a lighting study done for the proposed lights?
Chris, I think, well, I like Chris jumping on that. I think there were some early photometrics done.
Mm-hmm.
Now, like, the the lights that are being proposed are very similar that were recently put at North Hills and Hook Road. It's a new full cutoff LEDs.
Mm-hmm. Full cutoff.
Yeah, LSI, who is the manufacturer, I already went ahead and had them do a preliminary photometric study on the lighting system at that facility. And so we have that detail and and just as if, you know, all the other facilities we've installed these lights at um with the very short cutoff, there's really not a lot of um, you know, ambient lighting or or nuisance lighting being created from it, unlike, you know, previous, you know, metal halide systems that we've done. So I do have that detail if you are interested in seeing it.
Yeah, I might, I might follow up with you on that. Um, so I I take it, I wish I had seen it before, but I I take it it showed that the, there's not much dispersion um, say, into the woods uh for these lights, or probably none, right?
I'm, there isn't, and I'm sure Director Webb can speak to that, being that he is living right next to these courts that just had these lights installed and how short cutoff they have. They're pretty effective.
Right, so you'll see it from a distance, but it's not like it's spilling into anyone's backyard.
Especially this location with the setback that it has, it's almost impossible.
Yeah, okay, good. And then a question for Larry um is, I know that, you know, the suggestion is that we go and get, do more outreach and do more data, uh get more data. Um, no, it just always, always sounds like a good thing. What would that look like? I mean, if we were to do, you know, what we did in Shadowwood, which everybody acclaimed, everybody said that was a great uh outreach effort. Um, what what would it look like if we did that?
I think it would be exactly the same.
No, no, yeah, I, yeah, sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean necessarily um uh what it would, what it would produce. And I don't mean to cut you off. I know what you're gonna say, but how how would we do it? What are the mechanics of it?
I, you know, that's, that's an excellent question, and I I suppose I would work with Prac and Laura on that. I mean, they orchestrated the Shadowwood piece. You know, I think that, again, I, the difference here, though, is that this is a facility that people come from all over the community to use. Shadowwood, we saw from the survey, I mean, there are people that travel to Shadowwood as well, but it's primarily but, you know, a locally serving facility.
Right.
I think you're you're good, we would expect different, different data from it.
Right, right. Yeah, that's fair. It's it's a neighborhood-focused thing, so you're looking for neighborhood-focused uh opinions, whereas this is gonna serve the entire community, which is kind of what you're saying.
Right, and the and the other, the other major difference too that I would point out is that if it's lighted, because not all the courts are lighted, you know, people are gonna, people aren't gonna, unless they're very lo- hyper-local, they won't walk there. There, this is gonna be a destination facility where people are gonna say, hey, let's go meet at Barton Hill. You know, I'm coming from the Lake Anne area or whatever, because the courts are full. And let's play at Barton Hill. So it's it's a, it's a different animal because of the the lighting consideration.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Um, and just to finish up, I'm gonna support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, Tim.
Uh, I I very much agree with the comments made by Vice President Mooney, and I I just wanted to add that uh with respect to Shadowwood, that that very extensive and and highly successful outreach was justified by the unique circumstances of that neighborhood, including the need to have bilingual and multilingual outreach and the and the difficulty that some of those local residents had in participating in our usual outreach efforts. Those circumstances don't exist uh at Barton Hill. We've had extensive public outreach, uh both in the local neighborhood and from uh the Reston community as a whole. And and tonight, I was really struck by the fact that the the Chair of Prac um made the point that this had actually been proposed years ago. And so this has been thought about and considered for a very long time, and I agree with the idea that uh it's that the board can make a decision and we have adequate data and um member input to make a decision. Thank you.
Yes, Erin. Sorry, I I had forgotten you would have had your hand up earlier.
Well, that, that's fine. Um, I um, I I also agree that I, the, in this particular case, um delaying to gather more data won't lead us um, won't give us much more than we already have. Um, uh, and 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 personally, I I I have a lot of data. Um, I believe I live sixty feet from the Hook Road lights. Um, uh, and I I'm not a tennis player myself. Uh, my son has become one uh since the refurbishment happened. Um, and the way I see it is this is what the Reston Board is for, to to weigh these difficult decisions. Uh, Reston's not intended to be a museum of uh nineteen-sixties architecture or technology. We're supposed to be vibrant and progressive. Um, and I'll tell you what, the the high-quality renovation that was done here at Hook Road um has produced top-quality tennis courts. The LED lighting system is light years beyond uh what we had before. Um, yes, it kept me up the first month uh because the lights can stay on till eleven o'clock. Uh, they do go off right at eleven. You can set your watch by them. Um, and everybody was excited, so seven days a week, those courts were on till eleven for the first month. It's tapered off now. In fact, it's dark right now. I just checked. Um, and uh, because it's a weekday, uh Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they'll they'll be on, especially now that we're in daylight savings time. This is, this is a great amenity. We shouldn't delay any longer. Uh, you're welcome to come over to my house if you want to see them uh and and do a demo. I I I recommend them.
Thank you, Erin. Tom, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just follow up with what Erin said, which is this particular location is, it's on Sunrise Valley. It is basically commercial, everything in front of it's commercial, right next to W N O D Trail. There's some woods behind it, and then farther, farther back are houses. So if we're doing any projects that are not going to affect a particular neighborhood, this will be it. Those people that live close by obviously will be affected, but as Erin just said, they may be affected for a period of time, then it's gonna be over. Um, and again, I I think we just need to look at this from the standpoint of where it's located, and it's a very good improvement for South Reston. It's something that uh tennis players have asked for.
For all of Reston.
Correct.
For all of Reston.
But just, if we're gonna equalize the different sides of of Reston, this helps out.
Yeah, it's it's definitely needed in in South Reston. Are we ready to call the question? Yes, Jennifer?
Um, I am obviously am in South Reston, and I have members on both sides of this issue. Um, and and I understand both sides of the concerns. Um, and I want to provide members with the amenities that they would like to have. Um, I I I will be voting against this, though. I obviously, throughout the motion, I still believe um that the prudent thing to do is to go through the public process. Um, the board in the past commissioned a direct working group to come up with a process to evaluate and implement big projects. Um, we still, as a board, have yet to take action to finish um that, but we have those recommendations, and this facility is a large facility that has not been through that process. Um, we have a hundred and forty-three pickleball passes that have been purchased through Reston Association. We have parking issues. Um, there's a bus lane that is constantly used in front of that. We have a crosswalk um issue uh that is there. Neither of those have been been studied or are not in the funding that we would approve for this. Um, I would also caution the board that we are right now at an eight-hundred-dollar assessment, and this would add to my calculations, although someone is happy to correct me if I'm wrong, an additional thirty-nine dollars to the assessment, so we would be at eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars, um, which would be a sixteen-point-eight percent increase to our members. Um, the Glade facility and the reason I threw that motion out is the one that actually keeps closing. Uh, we also have um what we heard tonight, that we have portable pickleball. Um, that is not, a- and and I think that staff can probably fix this based on some of the feedback they heard, but apparently our our portable pickleball courts um are not available really that often for people to use, which is probably some of the frustration as to why everyone goes to Autumnwood is because we have the ability to offer more pickleball, but um somehow we're we're, we haven't been able to balance um where that is. Um, so I I think that we have two other options um to provide um pickleball to our members, and um that addresses a big portion of the concern um for those pickleball players that came and spoke with us tonight. So I I I would caution you on on all of those those items. If we want, we can also fund some portable pickleball um at Barton Hill if you guys want next year, which would, again, be a much more economical decision than where we where we are with an eight-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-dollar expenditure.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Karen, I have a question from Chris and Larry.
Yep.
Um, can you help us on the timeline, um either one of you? So say we put it in the budget, how soon, Chris, do you look at kicking off? Is this gonna happen, like, first thing? The minute you have the budget approval, you're going in front of the county or getting bids, or how soon does it roll out?
I would say that, like Hook Road, assuming a similar schedule pattern, um as soon as the budget is approved and cleared, I get in communication with Kim Lee Horn to get the electrical engineering uh task order drafted up and start getting that kind of in progress underway. As soon as that's then cleared and moved forward, they'll probably talk in sometime beginning of the new year, so we'll be moving forward to then submit to the county for the permit. That usually takes a couple of months. And so I would assume probably five to six-month construction time, because that's about what it took for Hook. Um, so assuming similar scenarios, um it would be probably completed sometime by, you know, early, mid, late fall time period, I sus- I suspect. Uh, if we were able to move on it, you know, relatively quickly and assuming a similar schedule pattern as Hook Road was.
And we also have to get it in front of the DRB as well for the lights.
That's true as well, yeah.
Would we have like a public input session, like we were talking for the pools, or is DRB the only option for public input?
I would believe that DRB would be the primary input point, because unlike, you know, pools which have a myriad of of design shot options and selections to go from, a tennis court in this instance is we're replacing the tennis court effectively um in kind in terms of the aesthetics outside of the lighting. So it's really just the lighting that would be going forward uh for the DRB approval, uh because beyond that, everything else would be the same, just new and better and and modern from the sense of the construction standpoint.
Thank you, Chris. I'm, just two cents to throw out there. We heard from a lot of pro Barton Hill folks because they side with. his side was taken off at the last budget. I'm just concerned come next week, we're going to have all of the, the against folks show up in 50s and 70 people and talk about it. And it worries me that we do not have a public input piece from the minute we say yes, it's in the budget and approved. So I'm really concerned about disenfranchising an entire neighborhood. And I was wondering if there was a way we could meet in the middle or build for some contingency in there to have a public input base. What looks like we have the majority support for the motion. So I'm hoping if um, those who made the motion would consider some public input contingency, or maybe some discussion where we have like a community meeting, like you guys did with Lake the Row Pool. Just my two cents.
Yes, John.
Good question, Sarah. I I I, I do not think that, um, a public process will find a middle ground on lighting and pickleball necessarily. But I do think there are, and, and I, I read every comment that was written pro and con. And I, I talked on the phone with one of the major representatives of, of those who are against pickleball and lighting. But I think there are, there are concerns about the parking on, on Sunrise Valley. Concerns about this crosswalk and other similar concerns absolutely need to be attended to. But I believe that they can be handled during the regular development process. And I think we Reston Association should commit to engaging Fairfax County in those concerns about those traffic safety issues especially. Um, so I think, I think we can and should do that. Um, but I, I, I do not think a process after listening to people and, and reviewing the history of this with Larry, I do not believe a community process will bring us closer together on the lighting or on the pickleball. And I think that's why we, in my view, we board members need to make the decision. I think we have enough data to do so.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, I think everybody's had a chance to speak at least.
Do we need clarification from, uh, from Tony where we are legally on this? Is this indeed a?
If, if it's a motion to rescind, which it, which it is, then yeah, requires two thirds.
So he confirmed that?
Well, and I, I, well, we confirmed that to each other today. Yes. And, and I, I did the research also. Tony, if you want to say publicly that you confirm that, go ahead.
Yes, the motion to rescind without fire notice requires a two thirds majority. You cannot do a motion to reconsider unless you're on the same day that the motion's made.
That was the thing that, yeah. Okay. Yes, Bob. And then we're gonna, we're gonna.
Yes, one last, uh, uh, if we, if we do Barton Hill next year, are we moving Glade back to 2023? Or are we going to do both?
That was a separate motion, was it? And I think we have to deal with all the motions that were made with regard to this.
But based on this one, we are, we are.
This one, this one is only going to move, if it's successful, move Barton Hill back to 2022 from 2023.
And leave.
And then if I'm, if I'm right, I think we would need to do a subsequent res- rescission uh, for the Glade portion.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. All those in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, opposed. One, two. Sarah, you, are you an A?
I'm abstaining on this one.
You're abstaining. Okay. So it's six, two, and one. So the motion carries. Okay, um, so I guess I need to make a motion to rescind the, uh, just to, to rescind the decision approved at the October 28th board meeting to move Glade Court renovations from 2023 to 2022.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Yes, Bob.
Can I ask Chris? The condition of, can Glade be put off another year?
I believe it can be. It's going to necessitate, you know, some care and maintenance additionally from our staff to do so, but I think it's possible.
Yeah, Chris, yeah, you had, you had assured, assured me and I think the rest of the board at one time too, that it could, we could get another year out of Glade without a problem.
Correct. Yeah, unlike a clay facility, um, unlike an asphalt facility, clay courts can be sort of um, limped along a little bit more effectively than you can an asphalt court. And in addition, um, with hopefully more seasonal staff available to help support that next year, um, that will be definitely key in, in pushing it for another year.
Yes, Larry?
The other point I would add about clay courts, because of the, the water-based system, they're not open as long either. They open later in the spring and shut down earlier in the fall.
Any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Okay, Sarah?
I'm an I.
You're an I, so that was unanimous? Okay. Was that it on that piece? Was there a, a third motion in there? Yes, Tim?
There was a third motion, I believe. Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I remember a third motion that had moved some funding on Barton Hill to 2022.
$50,000, I think.
Right, so we need to rescind that also? Yes, Larry?
We went back to the record and Christina, perhaps you can verify this. I don't think, but it was discussed and I know Chris put a placeholder there in the budget, but I don't believe it was actually voted on.
Okay.
Christina, can you verify that?
I'm trying to look it up right now, but I, I believe you're correct, Larry. I don't believe that was actually voted on. So I'm trying to open and, open the spreadsheet now.
Christina very thoughtfully put together uh, whole list of motions that evening, so we had that to work with the very next day. So the one, one of the ones I recall that, uh, that I there were a lot of motions inside was, was helpful.
Christina is a superstar.
I would concur.
No, I'm sorry. This was not voted on that evening. It was discussed, but it was not actually voted on.
Okay, so then we don't need to rescind anything. Right? Okay, thank you all. Um.
Karen?
Yes?
So then can we just ask staff to remove the 50,000? Cause I think Larry just said he put it in there.
We have a placeholder. Yeah, so you can, you can, yeah, I would think you can just say.
We will take care of that.
Yeah, it's on ba- the bottom of page 19 there.
Thank you, Bob.
Done.
Yes, Tim?
I, I'd like to make a very small change to the draft budget. If we're, if we're ready to move on, Madam President.
I believe we are.
Okay, the, the, the draft budget provides for a 3% increase in funding for merit pay for Reston Association staff, I move that the board approve a 3.5% increase. And if I can get a second for purposes of discussion, I would be happy to explain why.
Erin is seconding. Discussion. Go ahead, Tim.
Um, Madam President, I'm making this motion for business reasons. Uh, we have a staff retention issue at Reston Association. And I'm basing this conclusion on the advice we received from our former CEO, our acting CEO and our former Director of Human Resources. And we all know that the current regional labor, labor market is a job seeker's market. Uh, the loss of additional key staff would, uh, cause great harm to Reston Association. Increasing the merit pay pool from 3% to 3.5% would help to mitigate the staff retention problem. And it would send a clear message to staff that, uh, we value everything they do to keep Reston special and to make Reston a great place to live, work, and play. As you know, the Archer Report recommended a 5% increase. The increase to, from three to 3.5% would result only in a minimal increase to the assessment, something less than $2. I, I think it would be money well spent. And, um, I, I, I know that, um, our acting CEO, uh, would support this modification. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Comments, discussion?
I will be supporting it also. Uh, we've, we've all read in the Washington Post out of voluntary, um, terminations, people leaving the job on their own steam uh, is what at 2.9%, which is historic, uh, historical high or near historical high. So I, I support that and, and also as a, a sign of appreciation for um, what staff does day in and day out. So.
Any other discussion?
Can I ask what the assessment impact is, please? Tom, can you tell me what it?
I did a rough calculation of $1.76. So, but let's get the pro to do it.
Yes, Bob.
This is a performance based and it is based on a pool.
Correct.
It is not an entitlement. Yeah.
This is not a call.
Correct. And so not, not every dollar will be spent.
Tom, are you able to, to get that quick calculation?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to throw, throw some numbers together real quick here.
While we're waiting, um, do you mind if I make another comment? Since that was a question.
Is it, it, it pertains to this?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yes. Um, uh, we don't have Melissa here, but, um, I'm seeing surveys show, um, like 3.2% increases, not 3.5% increases. So I would be in favor of moving to like 3.25. Um, I am hesitant to move beyond that because we're in a situation where we are using, we are looking towards, based on Larry's recommendations, using member money that has already been paid, that has already been paid into the association to offset, um, assessment increases next year. Those are, a lot of those ended up being hard costs. They're year-over-year costs. They're not ones that you just get rid of. Um, or that you could say, I'm not going, that was a project and it's going away. I'm not doing that next year. Um, and so I, 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 I am fearful that I don't know how we're going to fund 2023 assessments. Um, because the board last year, um, and Erin, I actually think it was your motion, up assessments a little bit more in order to have this buffer um, that we have now to be able to use it for funding this year. Um, and I believe the original intention was really to fund, um, towards our, our triple RF, our facilities type, type expenses. And so, um, I think that staff do a great job. I think the whole DC market is and across the country, we are seeing, um, you know, the great recession, as everyone calls it. Um, but I, I, I would be in favor of bumping it up. I just, I am leery to bump it up um, by a whole half a percent. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any, any other comments? Yes, Erin?
Um, I, I think this again walks into that, that difficult territory that, that we have to wrestle with. Um, choosing between, uh, many good things. If, if we take several of the light items on this budget and, and reduce them down to, uh, a, a dollar impact on the assessment, um, this increase in this vote of confidence is Tom will come back with a real number, but going with Tim's number, you know, around $2 um, is a, is a smaller impact per resident um, than the other li- another light item that we have to, uh, to put in the, the director position, uh, for the environment, which I think is also something is desirable, but that comes in at, at, at $9 or, or eight something, um, a resident as well. And those are the balances. Um, and so perhaps not contained in this motion, but as we deliberate and, and come up on the final budget, maybe there's a balance we could strike with, with delaying, um, that position by a quarter of a year. And, 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 and finding a, a balancing funding for, for this. I think we have options like that. But, but the benefit of this, I, um, is appealing to me in, in a way to show staff that we appreciate them. Those are some of my thoughts anyway.
Karen?
Yes?
Can I have a question for Tony?
Sure. If it, yeah, does it pertain to this motion?
Yes. Okay, the Director Webb's comments. Tony, my motion for the Director of Environmental Services was very specific to add into the 2223 budget. Would modifications like delaying it or, you know, playing, you're playing around with it? I thought I was airtight and didn't have any room for that. And I thought I was dotting my i's and crossing my t's. Can you give us a little? Is that open? Is that a possibility? Can you talk on that, please?
Go back and look at the exact.
Can I ask, wait, can I ask what this has to do with the motion that's on the table?
Uh, Sarah, this, this, I mean, E- E- Erin brought that up, but it really isn't the motion that's on the table.
Yeah, as a suggestion, how to fund the motion on the table.
Ah, okay. Thank you. That wasn't clear. Thank you.
I have the, the number. You're ready?
Well, I, I, I see your hand, Bob. I'll get you. Go, go ahead, Tom.
So the increase would be to 270,000, about two, 271, a $40,000 increase or a little less than $2 on the assessment.
Thank you. Yes, Bob.
I lost, lost my train of thought, but, um, um, I came up with a buck 76, by the way. It's within a $1.75 to $2. Um, I think it is, uh, it is a, it, it, it's, staff has done a great job over the years. The problem, and this is, this has nothing to do with, my comment has nothing to do with any of the individuals. It's just our personnel costs are getting way out of whack. And one of the we cannot, we cannot, in my, in my humble opinion, continue on this, on this, uh, on this path forever. And, and one of the charges that I think, well, let me just say that I, I just think, uh, additional, uh, uh, additional dependence, uh, as, as we're now over 70% of the operating budget is, is, is personnel is. as we're now over seventy percent of the operating budget is, is is personnel is is unsustainable. And will, in a membership driven organization, just leave it at that. But I also agree that people should you know, we are in a tight labor market. And you're not going without completely gutting the organization. You've got to do something to hold on to people, so. I agree with both both Tim and Jennifer. How's that for riding the fence? We should, we should, we should give them something. I would, I would prefer it be three point two five than three and a half. But I think we need to keep in, no. Maybe not this year, but we keep on talking about every year, you know, looking very, very closely at at how we run, run this business and it's, it's a tough one.
It is. Tony, are you, are you or Christina looking up? What Sarah's? Working on, okay. Any, any other discussion on this?
I I would just, just, this is one board member. Because of the energy and passion invested in the Environmental Services Director position, I would not support balancing this small cost by taking anything, any time away from the hiring of the, and by by asking for a delay in the hiring of the Environmental Services Director. This, I personally would not support that. It's too important to many people. So that's one, one director.
Would this have more support if we compromised? I mean, it's really, it's really, what's it going to change the increase if we go to three, from three, three, five to three point two five? It's going to make like a dollar difference in the assessment? Increase, it's just.
I think it would.
Be less than, it's going to be less than a dollar.
Yeah.
Well, less than a dollar, I believe.
Yeah.
Let let me just tell Tony and 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 Christina, I actually transcribed word for word the the three times the motion was made on October twenty eighth, Sarah's motion. I can, if you trust my transcription, I can read it. She made the motion three times.
We all need the one that's carried. I think we have that one.
Okay.
Motion is move to direct staff to recruit the director of environmental services as part of our senior leadership team as part of twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget. And according to Sarah, there was no monetary amount set with it. So I don't think this is an apples to apples comparison. And I, to answer Sarah's specific question, I don't think there's funds necessarily to draw from. I understand that there was a discussion and an approximate number was given, but I don't think that this board put a specific amount in their budget, Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, other than what Larry presented as the placeholder amount.
Right. We, we looked at it. We, you know, Melissa did some early general comps and so the figure that we have in there, including benefits and that you have in in your materials is is what is into this current draft of the budget.
Yes, Erin.
I worry that the, my, for instance, example has has taken us off track of Director Dowling's motion and and what he's trying to get at. My point was to show that it wouldn't be difficult for us to try and find a way to fund this without driving the total assessment that we land on too high. I I I thought that was a, for instance, that, hey, it might take us three months just to find the right person. And it may just happen as a natural course. I I wasn't trying to open up another discussion. I apologize that that's what happened.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready to to vote? Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed? Sarah?
I'm an A.
You're an A. So six to three, the motion carries. Okay.
I have two motions, if you'll entertain me.
Okay.
Moon was the same as we, we were talking about Barton Hill. Just for a minute to jump back in that, I'd like to move to direct RA rec and communications teams to work with Prac to host a focused community meeting to inform and educate immediate neighbors on the effects and impacts of the facilities renovations at Barton Hill, specifically the lighting, traffic, traffic patterns, etc. I can get a second. I can explain why.
Second.
Could you repeat that, please, Sarah? Direct, yeah, go ahead.
Direct RA rec and communications teams to work with Prac to host a focused community meeting to inform and educate immediate neighbors on the effects and impacts of the facilities renovations at Barton Hill, specific to lighting, traffic patterns, et cetera.
I believe I heard to direct the acting CEO to direct staff.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes. Okay, we have a second in.
I'd like.
Yes, John?
I'd like to hear from Chris Shoemaker. When the information that Sarah's wanting to to share with the immediate community, over what period of time will that information become available? Because I would imagine some of it will depend on design work. Is that true, Chris, or?
Would, I believe, require some of the design engineering to have that kind of information compiled in regards to things like the traffic patterns and and designs and things of that nature? That wasn't really something that was captured as part of this project, being that the focus is on the tennis court. So if further evaluation and study is requested to be done on you know, roadways and things of that nature, that's, that's something different, I think, from the project that would need to be included.
The, the traffic, the traffic evaluation is is a V dot concern. And so, you know, we would be subject to whatever timeframe they could come out and you know, do do whatever study they would need to do. We can make a simple request to just get rid of that that funky old bus stop and merge lane or strike it with no parking signs up. That might be a simple ask, but again, until we actually do that and get involved with V dot, it's hard to say what that timeframe might be.
Would Fairfax County help us with that, Larry?
Possibly, possibly. At least I know who to contact, at least. So that's helpful.
Okay. I think we need to communicate to the community that we, we hear their crosswalk concerns. We hear that parking on Sunrise Valley Drive concern and other specific concerns that they've mentioned. And 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 they see us diligently engaging in it.
That's right, John. And hence the motion says inform and educate. I'm not saying, let's get their opinion. Do they want it? No, I'm just saying, let's keep them in the loop, keep them part of the conversation.
Right. No, I'm supporting that part of your motion, Sarah.
Thank you, John.
Any other discussion?
Jennifer has her hand up.
You, you, there's so much light on you. I didn't see your hand.
Sorry. I I would support the motion. I would hope that as a board, we would go farther than supporting the motion. As Chris said, these projects are not part of what he was proposing. And we ask developers all the time to mitigate their own traffic. And if we are thinking that we're going to bring more traffic to this area, which is what I'm I'm hearing, then I think that the board should go farther than than this, but happy to support this motion. And that means pay. Sorry. I think that we should pay for any additional traffic issues that we create.
I think we should wait and see if we are creating a traffic issue. I'm not, um, let's, let's I'm not sure we will be, but anyway.
Sir, are you?
It would be a happy problem to have if, you know, it it was, you know, created a traffic problem. I'm not, I'm not sure it will, but.
That's why developers are required to do traffic studies, so. Is to to determine that in advance, instead of put something up and then say, oh, boy, I created some traffic issues here. That's, that's the purpose.
Well, I I hear you. It's, I don't think this is exactly the same as as that, but anyway. Any other discussion? Erin?
I I just, I I'd like to clarify with.
Erin had his hand up.
Okay, pardon, Erin. So, um, when I first moved to Reston, my first experience, I stayed at the the Hilton down off of Route twenty eight. Drove in a rental car. It was October. I came along Sunrise Valley because that's what the GPS told me to do. And I still vividly remember coming down from the light at South Lakes and down that hill and seeing those trees. Barton Hill behind the tennis courts, all in their, their fall foliage. And calling my wife that night and saying, you should see this place that I'm on this business trip. A couple of months later, the Navy assigned me here for twelve months and and I've been here since. Our first home was on a little, a little town home there on Green Bush Court, which is up Barton Hill, there's four townhomes on this little tiny street. And I walked to work for a couple of years and I would walk down and cross the street at that crosswalk and walk by the tennis courts and go to work and then walk home for lunch and then go back and then come home at at dinnertime. I personally feel like there's going to be plenty of barking between those two parking lots. One, one over at the soccer field, one at the, one at the tennis court. I I have a hard time seeing this as a really divisive issue. Now, the shrubs, they were big. When I lived there, I bet they're larger now. It it's probably a little bit tricky to see. The crosswalk's kind of good. It's set back. So there is space that you could turn the corner before you get to the crosswalk and you should be slowing down because you're going into a residential area, anyway. It's a, it's a good thing, but I think it takes staff's time and and the cost. So I I'm going to have to abstain on this one because I don't feel like voting against, but but I I can't support putting that extra work on. Thank you.
Yes, John.
Madam President, I'd like to ask Sarah, Sarah, can you specify, did you have a timeframe in mind for this?
No, I did not. I left that up to staff's discretion.
Okay.
To, yeah.
I would think that you would want to have that education meeting before you started construction. I don't mean to be be flip about it, but once the, once they start gouging, gouging out the the tennis courts, I think you've already told the neighborhood that you're going to do it. So I think, you know, as soon as you have enough information that you could provide people with the design that that should be adequate in it at this juncture, we just don't know.
And and to be respectful of the process, we would do this in advance of the DRB meeting. Because, and I suspect Cam could weigh on on this, weigh in on that. We will have a fairly wide notification of, you know, virtually the, all the townhouses that back up to the woods, the single family homes on cross school that back up to the woods. And then I think where Aaron lived by above the soccer field. You know, so there's going to be the closest twenty residents minimum will be notified. And so we would want to have that discussion before then, hopefully answer some of the questions. So those questions don't come up during the meeting. Oh, they may still come up, but at least we've had the opportunity to discuss that with them.
Right.
Karen, if I may. So part of my hope is, you know, we never hope for this, but I'm hoping this motion passes through, that Reston now will pick it up, or we can have Mike Leoni send it out. That we are, this is the plan. We will keep them as part of the conversation. So on November eighteenth, we don't have fifty members coming in and making comments about not wanting it and going back and forth. So at least if we keep them in the loop, saying, yes, we've put it back in the budget, but you're going to be a part of that conversation. And you will get an opportunity, like Larry said earlier, ahead of, before we go into DRB. I just don't want to disenfranchise that into the neighborhood by saying, we don't care what you think. We're going to do whatever we want. And to address, Erin, I think the reason you ran for the board or your first interaction with RA was Hook Road. So you were part of that conversation and I think that's all they're asking. And if we included them, we'd have more friends down the line, instead of, you know, making them feel like they're ignored. That's my only intention right there.
I I I'm trying to understand. I I have no problem with educating the the neighborhood there as to what's what's planned, what we're going to do. This is not the same as as Lake Throw Pool, where there were a lot of design elements that we needed community input on. This is just a basic, you know, resurface the court, put up lights and make it for, you know, permanent or not for pickleball. So I I just, I think my what I just want to make sure of is that we're not opening ourselves up to a, I guess backlash for, for want of a better word, now that we're, it's back in the budget for twenty twenty two is all. I have no problem with with communicating about what, you know, what we're planning on doing.
I think that's exactly the point. But the backlash is coming. I'm just hoping we can mitigate it.
I'm not sure that's going to mitigate it. But I think that the people that are going to be angry about this are going to be angry about it, period. I don't, I don't know how we could mitigate it by.
So we're saying, go ahead and be angry and we don't care that you're pissed off. Or we're saying, we do care about how you're feeling and we want to take your feelings into consideration and keep you in the loop every step of the way, or, you know, where possible, on what we're doing to your neighborhood. So you don't have to find out secondhand after the bright lights come on. But again, I can keep going on debating this. If no other questions, you can call them out.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
I.
Three, four, five. Anybody opposed?
I, Karen, I'm an I.
You're an I? Okay. You're an I? Okay. All right. Anybody opposed? I'm going to abstain.
I'll also abstain.
Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you. And Larry, if we could put out something along these lines? I know we keep sending stuff to Mike Leoni. I think it'll help us get in front of this.
We can do that. Mike's on the call. He's, I think he's hearing it, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Was there something else? Did you have another motion, Sarah?
Nope, that's it, Karen. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else we need to discuss before we adjourn? Okay, I think this was really worthwhile. Thank you all for uh, I'm glad we could do this without setting a separate meeting date. Yes, Jennifer?
I just want to make sure, um, that we are now changing Friday's packet of information, Larry.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, that's
Okay.
As I said, Tom and I and Chris are, are going to be very busy over the next two days. Um, as I sent that email to you, we've got the, uh, we've got to take some about 50,000, $48,000, $50,000 out of the benefit costs because our Kaiser Reno came in considerably lower than what Melissa estimated at 5%, so that's a, that's a positive. That might cover the, the 0.5% that you all voted on. So yes, all, all the changes that have been discussed will be incorporated into a revised, revised numbers, revised layout of, of the funding strategy, all that.
So we will have a draft four officially now, because we have made changes.
Yes, I, I think what I'll do is, I will probably call it final draft.
Okay. And, um, I wanted to make sure Tom was going to also do the one-page version in the packet that we typically post to the membership. It's the purple and gray version that we have out there, although you guys can change the colors, but.
Is that the one where it, where it's by department?
No. There's it's the one that we post on the website. Because that isn't in, that isn't in this dra- draft.
It's the one with the purple and green headers?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
And then my final question was 2023 in this presentation tonight was blank. And we are voting on a 2022, 2023 budget? I just want to make sure that that's the plan.
We'll have that. And in reality, because the assessment has to be set annually, even though it's a biennial budget, the 2023 budget, for those of you who have been through this before, uh, truly is a placeholder. Because we will have as much as we won't, wouldn't want to, we're going to have very similar discussions next year as we get into 2023.
Hopefully a little bit less. Because hopefully there are some things that are going to stay in 2023.
Oh, I would agree. We always, we always hope for less.
Yes.
Terms of time and so forth.
But yes.
We're not always successful.
Yeah. Which is why, which is why some people have wanted us to go to an annual budget instead of a biennial budget. Since we sort of do it annually anyway, but.
But, and I, but I appreciate all the input and, like, say, we'll, we'll get the revisions incorporated and you know, when you get it on Friday, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact me. You know, let's try to get those questions answered, you know, in advance. And then, again, as I said earlier, um, would encourage you to participate in fiscal on Monday. You have the opportunity because that's going to be a, a really good discussion on Triple RF and how that's funded.
Sounds good. Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, John. Second, Jennifer, thank you. I. Thank you all. I think this was, as I said, I think this was well, well worth doing and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Karen.
Everybody.
Bye.
Thanks.
Night, everybody.
Night.